Michael.
Can you begin?
Thank you. Welcome to the Problem is for Council Work Meeting. It is Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024 at 3:30 PM. Our elected officials here today are Counselor George Handley, Counselor Becky Bogdan, Counselor Gary Garrett, myself, Latrice McKay, Counselor Rachel Whipple, and Counselor Craig Christensen. Although this is a public meeting, only the presenters and those invited by the council may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to speak until called by the chair. When speaking, please be sure to use a microphone so that the record is clear and those attending virtually can hear you. Please also be sure to let side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording. If you need to have a side conversation, please step out of the work meeting room. This proposal will approve the following minutes. October 15th, 2024 council meeting minutes. November 5th, 2024 council meeting minutes. November 19th, 2024 council work meeting minutes. Are there any objections or requested changes? Seeing objection, it's approved by unanimous consent. Our first amendment business is a resolution approving an amendment to the current interlocal cooperation between Provo City, Utah County, and other local municipalities for the law enforcement program known as the Utah County Major Crimes Task Force. And this was presented by our chief, Troy Beebe.
Counselor, thank you very much for attending me today at the holidays. The holidays.
Utah County Major Crimes Task Force. I spent eight years of my career on that team. It's a multi-agency task force that primarily works on drug trafficking organizations. They're key in our quality of life. The addiction of illicit drugs is crippling at some point. To a point that it is a root of crime. So our quality of life issues in Provo circulate around theft and different things of that nature. And it's based off feeding an addiction. This team works to reduce those numbers and improve our quality of life. Not only in Provo, but in the county. And they're funded through a grant and through cooperation with each of the cities that participate. That's done according to, that's the formula that is done to meet those funding requirements. To pay the rent, if you will, is done by per person, by population. And so that's a huge part of helping us achieve our goal. With this, I came to talk to you, give you just a little bit on the task force. They do drug trafficking organizations and they, to, on the calendar date this year, we've seized 250 pounds of methamphetamine, 62 pounds heroin, a considerable amount of fentanyl. Each of these things are public safety issues in that we've also had, I think the last number that I looked at was 47 overdose incidents and calls. So this is something that needs to make sure that we are on top of and enforcing. That's Provo calendar. Yes, so give me a little leeway either way, but that's about what I remember seeing the last time I looked. Now that's patrol responding to that. But the drugs that the task force has tried to take off the streets are responsible for those calls. So without, without them doing that, that great work, we would have a lot more.
Are any of those Narcan saved?
Absolutely. I gave you the numbers because I know we go through a supply of Narcan yearly. An amount.
A huge amount.
I should have given you the numbers somewhere there. For example, if someone, I don't just use one on one patient, it could be multiple depending on the severity of the overdose. So that's, they could tell you based off that. We do go through a supply of. So with that, there's.
Three things that I wanted to talk about. One, with regard to the task force. One, inflation has raised our rate. I'll be coming to you with a request with my budget coming up here soon. This year, we have need of, it was 91. Yeah, but here. Nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty cents was the increase for this year. And that was based off inflation. It was our portion of the amount. Again, based off of population. And I believe the number is 52 cents a resident right now. So anyway, that increase of $9,100 has come out of our operations budget. And in the past, we've used our personnel overages to supplement that. It's not an option this time. So we're trying to right-size that. And right now, that's what it is. It's $9,100 in difference for the cost of keeping up the task force. The other two things that I wanted to bring up to the council was there's two sections of our MOU, our Memo of Understanding with the task force. And the first one is a simple request to extend the date to 2029. So five, five more years. The second is a, it's based off of insurance and I may. If we are sued, because this is a multi-agency task force, there are two different cities involved in the lawsuit. And what the contract in just does is it requires us to notify the other party. It does not allow us to settle without cooperating or at least notifying within two weeks of our intent to do so. And it basically allows for better communication. And these things often come because of incidents that have occurred. And so that's what has stemmed from an incident was the need to communicate better when it comes to claims and loss. And this wasn't anything doing from Provo City. It was two other agencies, but it was the executive, the executive team that is a party to the task force that come up with this. And then the Utah County Attorney's Office has been correlating with all the other attorneys to make this happen. So those are the two functions that needed to be changed within the MOU. I think initially, there wasn't a physical part of this with regard to funds. It just required those two. But since we had the deficit this year, I brought it to your attention. That's what's happened. With that, can I answer any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Gary Garrett.
So Orem's designation as the Financial and Accounting Department is not a change.
That is not a change. We, as a continuation of the second section two, we have done that consistently. Just right-sized them so that they were appropriate amounts. But it is, it is a combined, that employee is a task force employee. And because Orem is the director of the task force, they made their way at the Orem City employee, but they only pay the same amount that the rest of them do.
And then I saw.
Does that make sense?
It does, uh-huh, thank you. I saw at the end of the packet, all of the signature pages for cities from Salem to Highland and Saratoga Springs. I didn't do a roll call per se, but I wondered if there are any municipalities in Utah Valley that are not participating in your cooperative. They all are.
They are.
Okay.
Yes. And I think it truly is because of the importance of what they do.
Right, right.
Becky Bogdan. So Chief, why is Orem the hub? Is it because they're the ones that initially started it or?
They actually started in the mid, late 90s. And Provo was, there was Provo and the Utah County Sheriff's Department had small teams that they were out doing this work. And soon they found that they were working on the same people. This was the joining of the task force, the start of the task force. Soon became better than it's grown since then. But Provo was a major part of it. I think back then, I'm going to make an assumption, so maybe a trouble here. But it was easier for Orem to do that out of better financing. They just, that's how it stayed.
Thank you. Brian, are we okay with all of the legal stipulations within there?
Yeah, I mean, this is just an amendment to an existing agreement that's already in existence and that changes are very minor. In fact, Chief and I had a conversation about if it wasn't for the fact that little tiny paragraph about the $9,000, it wouldn't even need council approval.
So legal is okay with whatever they put in there?
Yeah.
Thanks. Right, any other questions for Chief?
Hey, thanks, Chief. I guess you can stay up there. Oh, nope, Brian Taylor's gonna. Nice, all right. Well, thank you. Next resolution approving a $30,000, $30,000 budget allocation for the general fund to the police department to fund the Provo language incentive program.
Counsel, thank you for letting me be here. I'm Captain Brian Taylor of the Police Department. It's been a few years since I presented here, but I'm happy to be here today and talk about something that's important to us. I have command of the Support Services Division. According to Chief Beebe, I'm in charge of our evidence people, our records bureau, fleet operations, training, internal investigations, and budget. And I don't mind admitting that when I was in the academy years ago, learning how to shoot a gun or drive a car, there was no part of my heart that thought someday we're going to be the budget guy. There's one thing to be about to ask in this presentation. This request has to do with our principles and talking about. Talking about something that has to do with equal access and removing barriers to service. Language, lack of language skills among our English language fluency among the population and second language proficiency in the department is absolutely a barrier to accessing police services. So you will recall that Spanish is the second most commonly spoken language in Provo. 21,000 people, according to census data identified as Latin or Hispanic in our community. We intend that this program is to promote criminal language skills among employees that observe communities. Right now, the police department documents, I'm going to make a distinction here, but we document 115 Spanish language calls for service a month. These are calls for service in which an officer is assigned to get in his car and drive across town. Somebody's doing now, go help another officer who needs Spanish language assistance. This statistic does not capture the hundreds or thousands of monthly organic interactions that happen between officers, Spanish-speaking citizens. So it's a small fraction of the total. We have challenges. Our traditional approach has been to recruit, train Spanish-speaking people as they become available. We have some advantage here in Provo. Provo is a place where people come and go all over the world and gather language proficiencies and missionary programs. And then they bring those skills here. We benefited by training and recruiting those people. But after we bring them, after we get them here, we have not been great about quantifying what they do. We've not been great about developing any greater capability in our department that efforts, we just benefited from what we get walking in the door. The 2023 ACOU report focused on how police agencies all over the state, including in Provo, need to improve their service to limited English proficiency citizens. I'm going to use the term LEP in this discussion to refer to people who don't speak English, LEP, people in communities. We need to do better by this group, and a language incentive program is a start. We have, the program that we envision will employ a FLAS test of foreign language advancement, testing screening test. This is the same testing instrument the university uses to offer credit to people who want academic credits for their language skills. You take this test, you get a score. The score distinguishes between proficiency levels. A level one person is someone who can manage basic communications. And in the context of police work, think about someone who can navigate the basics of a traffic stop or tell somebody "suelte la arma, to drop the gun, monos aware, chans up." These are phrases, I don't speak Spanish. These are literally phrases that were in the book that I was giving. A level two proficiency is someone who is moderately fluent and might be able to conduct an entire field investigation in conversational Spanish. A level three proficiency is someone who has a measurable advanced language proficiency. Someone who can read and write fluently in Spanish. At our assessment, we will, this program will compensate people who test to these levels at three different levels of compensation. It's a small monthly amount. It's 50, 100, or $150 depending on that level skill. There are the incentive structures right there. Our intent is to attract, train, and retain people with this critical skill to the department. To our knowledge, no one else in the region is doing this in an organized way. We intend to enhance our ability to provide services to LEP peoples and communities and to compensate officers who use those skills on behalf of Provo citizens. I remind you that our policing philosophy is community policing. It's what we do, and community policing depends on the ability to develop partnerships with people in order to work with them and devise workable solutions to public safety problems. Lack of, lack of language skill is a barrier to building partnerships. Talk a little bit about costs. Currently, we have tested 16 department members with this FLAS instrument. This is who tested, this is how it breaks down right now. Four of them tested level one, they would receive a $50 month payment. Nine in the second group, a level two, and free at that top group. That's a monthly compensation cost of $1,550. The cost of the test is $40. Tagulate these costs in the next few slots. The annual cost for that group would be about $18,600. We anticipate, these are estimates based on who we recruit and the interest we've had in testing so far. We anticipate that were this program enacted, we'd attract another 10 people by recruiting or enticing people to our current staff to test and study advance. We recruit this program by another 10 people, and the average cost, the estimated annual program cost would be $29,500. There's that cost. People may retest. Within the program, the intent is to take that level one person, give him a reason to go sign up for Rosetta Stone or whatever the other online program is, and get to that next level, deliver better service to people in Provo. The ACOU report, we're telling you that there's a citation in the end of the presentation highlights inefficiency. The issue that us is a moral one. It's, are we serious about our community policing mission? Are we willing to do what it takes to attract and retain and develop people to better serve that mission by providing services to people with limited English proficiency? It's not just Spanish. There are a number of languages. We have officers in the department who speak American Sign Language. They get called on, they go mediate disputes of neighbors, you know, communicate with sound. It's all the languages of the Pacific Isles. And we haven't tested anybody in some of these areas, but we will. But they will, they happen to be here in about the same proportion that citizens in our community exist, so it's broadly represented. Our budget request is really one about values. A budget is, a government budget is a statement of what a government values. This is what a budget is. And our current budget doesn't reflect this value. Ask you to consider that and think about what it means to really serve our community policing mission and provide services to people with limited English proficiency. Are there any questions?
Counselor Christensen.
So this is for Spanish. Do you plan on extending this to other languages?
Yes, I use Spanish as the major example.
Okay.
But if someone speaks ASL, there's a test instrument for that, and we will compensate for that.
Okay. Second question was around your choice to use the FLAS test. I received some feedback from one of our citizens who has expertise in this area and questioned whether that was really the best, you know, vehicle or test, you know, to use. That it's, I understand, more directed to a listening comprehension, but not necessarily a dialogue, you know, kind of comprehension. Could you just share your thinking on what took you to that and why you decided?
So this was the instrument at hand. And if there's a better one, we would happily consider that. But the FLAS test does differentiate between levels of fluency and proficiency. And what we see when we look at the people who test it is that they are the ones who have conversational abilities. And so the level one proficiency, for example, doesn't stress much about grammar and written accuracy. But if people can follow the thread of a piece of writing, those are the same people who can follow the thread of a spoken discussion, which is what level one proficiency reflects. But if there's a better tuned test instrument to help us get to street level fluency, we'd happily evaluate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe it's a related question. So when you say it was the only one at hand, have you, you said this is the same test that's used at BYU. Did you speak with the language center at BYU or?
I did not. We assigned a, we have a Spanish-speaking lieutenant who began this project. He reached out to the university and solicited advice on how to measure language proficiency. on how to measure language proficiency, and he said, oh, we have that for that.
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to help make sure that it was the right person. Maybe it was, I don't know. That, that was a similar question I had, because oral, oral proficiency is not as well measured by, by that test, but that's not to say that it, that it would be a bad tool. I think it might, might be a good tool to start with, and then if we find something better, you know, or we could supplement, you know, whatever that tool is providing with other opportunities, if that's necessary, if there were
Well, the intent is to
dialogue, you know, engagement with subverbal skills can be enhanced, that would be something.
The intent is to attract and develop the right skills.
Yeah.
And we are not, we're not ready to contract with the university this year, we're going to use this only. If we find the best instrument, we will happily use it.
Yeah. I think it's fantastic. I'll just express my support for it. I think we did that Spanish language town hall last year. We intend to do another one later this summer, next summer. And I was so impressed with the eagerness of a lot of limited English proficient people in the city who want to be part of the community, want to contribute, but who can only do so primarily through Spanish. And so I think this is a great way to help provide better services for our city. So I'm, I'm excited, fully supportive.
For a sentence. Anything else?
Just so you know, Captain Taylor, I did say everything non-romantic, so you can see what, it was quite detailed. Counselor.
Oh, I'm so glad that you're here and doing this. I remember a couple of years ago, as a council, we'd asked about Spanish language and access with our officers and everything. This was before the ACLU report came out. And we were told at that time that we're good. We've got these officers that we, we deploy around. And I'm, I'm just happy to see that we're doing more now.
Well, I will tell you, we have abided a long time and benefited from this organic capability existed in the department by virtue of the fact that we recruit locally. That's a strength. We're probably better at this than people in other regions. That's not the same as saying we're serving all of these communities as well as we could.
I'm, I'm just delighted. So at that time, I think one of the, the things that you talked about was in the application process when people were applying to the job, do they get extra points or something like that if they have language skills that they can bring to it?
That we give points, but I will tell you, everybody who comes into, I, I assist the chief on these command level interviews, and everybody who comes in gets asked, tell us about your language competencies. And if they say Spanish, that gets written in bold letters on our little scoring sheet under the section fit for the job.
So it's, it's a big consideration.
Key consideration in recruitment and hiring. And so I just, I just managed the recruitment process for a front counter records clerk. And my criteria for that was find someone with the right skills and who speaks Spanish.
Well, that was going to be my next question. So this isn't a program just for officers, but for
For sworn and not sworn department members.
Okay.
And interacts with the public.
Dispatch?
They are not under this program, and in dispatch, they have a, they have a an online, a telephonic translation system that they use, but I don't think they're under this policy.
They're, they're fast, yeah. So the last question that I have is, how hard would it be to alter your protocol or whatever it is that you do for your reports to note the language of the interaction or what the preferred language would have been so that we, we have better data?
But you can, someone can code all kinds of things.
Is the harder thing getting everybody to just check the boxes when they're filling out their forms?
Checking. It's not hard to capture information you ask cops to capture.
Yeah. I, I think that would, would be helpful, and, you know, it's something that's like, you know,
Were you able to do this interaction in the language that you had? Would it have been better if you had fluency in another language? Be careful about not creating a barrier by asking people about their language preferences. Some, in the Spanish speaking community, for example, there are barriers to even accessing police services, cultural barriers. And if we quiz people about their heritage, it can be perceived badly.
Yeah, and I certainly don't want you to run into any civil rights issues as, as well with that. I, I would just like to know if, yeah, we're, we're building enough resources to help our population. And I also want to know if our officers who do have dual language fluency end up with like more overtime or other things because they get
That's part of the intent of this program. Officers who have this competency commonly get dragged away from their investigations to go support someone else's investigation. And it's a burden on them. And they get overworked, and this begins to appropriately value the, the value they bring to the department. So that is part of the intent of the program.
Would it be helpful to have a couple of just interpreter translators who are not officers that could be called in?
I can tell you that our, our victim advocates office used to get called daily to send people down to the front counter. There's a need at the front counter. People walk in for business, and they don't speak English. We struggle, and we have to bring people down from wherever we can find them. Which is why we focus on our recent recruitment the way we did. So perhaps we need to, we need to do a better job of serving people who walk in the door. We need to do a better job of putting out all of our printed materials in Spanish and other key languages. There, there, what I'm saying is there are things we can do better, and the ACOU pointed to some of them. We know some of them, and this is one of them.
Yeah, well, I, I'm very happy to see that there's, there's progress and movement on it and that you're taking the the matter seriously. So thank you for that, and, and I'm looking forward to seeing what next things you want to do.
Thank you, Karen.
Counselor Bodden.
So my question would be, if this is basically COP, does that mean that we're going to, I don't want to use the word discriminate, but I am going to use it, against other officers that don't have a second language to be a part of that program?
No, this, anyone is, is able to test. And if they want to go learn and study the little book they got on the academy, hit the key phrases, a few extra classes, they might pick up a level one certification.
Well, let's just say Waters. I love Waters. I don't know if he speaks another language or not, but let's say he applied for the position test. Does he? I don't know. The only thing I've ever heard him speak is English, but let's say he wanted to apply for the position he has now in COP. Would he be looked at differently because he doesn't speak a second language?
No, we don't select officers for assignment within divisions or teams on that basis. That's not the way we approach those, those internal
Because I would hate to lose a good officer like Grow or Waters or Brof because they didn't have another language.
I've participated in many, many, many interview processes for appointing officers to special teams, and that's not how we operate. So we look at people who have mastered the basics of the patrol function, are reliable, can produce good investigations and reports, and say, this person will be able to function as a detective. Just major crimes task force drug investigator. And the language competency follows them around wherever they serve. And frankly, there are too few of them to really distribute that way.
So we're not, we're not to that point yet? And then my other question was, are you equally dividing these people on the different shifts, or are they just all on day shift?
No. They, we, we will catalog who they are. There'll be a notation next to their name on the computer assisted dispatch screen. So when the dispatcher needs a Spanish speaker to respond to the domestic violence somewhere, she can say, thirty-two eighteen, that has to be my response. But we're, we don't group them that way. They, they pay according to their seniority for shift availabilities. And it would be pretty disruptive to put them because of one competency. By the way, there are thousands of different competencies that we wish we could equally distribute everywhere. That would become a very brutal schedule.
And my last question is, why come today for this instead of come during budget season?
Thank you for asking. The answer is that A is important. B, recent changes to finance rules have made it so that we cannot fund operational things, programs, and on the same basis which we used to do, which was by requesting personnel funds to fund many of the activities that we use to fund. The discretionary portion of our operations budget, two thousand nine point four million dollars. Recent changes to finance have taken, in FY twenty-three, for example, there was five hundred forty-nine thousand dollars of carryover from from payroll savings to supplement operations. That is a thirty-eight percent functional budget cut, and we are hurting. So we have to be in council, reconstituting an operational budget for all kinds of things. In other words, be prepared to see my face asking for money. I don't know how else to say it, but I do appreciate the question.
So if I cut you another fifty percent, I'll see you more? Is that what you're saying? I get to see Captain Taylor.
Just trying to help.
Thank you, Captain Taylor.
In, in line with that, Captain Taylor, do you think with the hurt, this is where the money should be going? Is this the right priority?
I think the amount of money that we're asking for, that we need, is much larger than this. But that this program is central to our community policing mission. So it is appropriate for me to be here now asking for thirty thousand dollars to better serve people in Provo. I don't want to start doing this tomorrow so I can start recruiting these people tomorrow. This is, we're in a very competitive recruiting environment, and if I could say to officers, come test with us, we'll, we'll pay you a competitive pay, and by the way, you speak Spanish. That's the national money in your pocket. That's a, that's a competitive recruiting environment that you need.
What, what would you say your, how many officers are you missing right now? I know seventeen has been the number in the past with our, with the number of people in the city of Provo.
I think they should be correct, but I think we're currently down ten. You're aware of a couple of pending retirements. And so just a few months ago, we were very nearly fully staffed, and now we're down ten. By the way, staffing in police department is like that game you used to play in grammar school, where you run across the field with a juicy cup full of water. There's always water leaking out. That's just the way fishing works. But right now, we're down ten. We're anticipating.
I know I hear from citizens a lot that they wish, they want, you know, they want even more police, you know, like more people watching for speeders or more people walking the trails or more people. So that is, you know, I just wonder what your numbers are at. I know it's hard.
But what is your number from that study, that two thousand twelve study that says we should be here and we're at here?
Well.
How many are we like missing to be at full capacity? Not attrition. No, that one study that Ferguson was always talking about, that, that, that the, that the police did
They have a theory that not a hundred and thirty-one sworn, if we were correctly staffed then. And so we, we benefit from when I asked for money in this meeting, we respect the tax dollar and our obligation to be a steward of the tax dollar. I assure you, we're doing that. We've been doing that for a very long time, producing a high quality public safety product for the lowest bill our costs we can. And the major way we do that is by cooperating with citizens, developing relationships, and benefiting from the goodness of people in Provo who want to see our community and want these professions. So we're not policing Las Vegas here. It's Provo City. We have our public safety problems, but we, we get away with what we can away with because Provo is a decent, safe place to live. But we are getting away, you're getting an enormous benefit from a per capita basis, a modest investment.
So what's, what is your budget for sworn officers? How many sworn officers are you, do you have?
We are allocated one hundred and twenty-nine and a half FTEs.
So we're down ten from that twelve study?
One hundred and, I just thought one hundred and twenty-five.
So, okay, we're down fourteen from that.
So can I answer that?
Yes.
So that's based off of per capita. And I, I've come forward because of this simple premise of the, the sacred way that we handle tax dollars. And we, we don't use per capita, we use workload. And workload study shows that we need more officers, or we don't need vacuum. The sixty-fourty, I've, I've explained it a couple of times, that the, that sixty percent of the time, one officer should be responsive to calls and take care of business, forty percent of the time, one should be proactive. It's not there. But that doesn't account to per capita numbers that C D was based on. So we're responsible for the money that we don't, we're allocated, we respect that. On the fourth, for all of the, to clarify this, one day is Jeremy Brown, who we worked with for the, the BYU. And forty-two, forty-two is the number for overdoses. So I'll clarify that.
Any other questions for?
Okay, thank you so much, Captain. All right, next, in ordinance amendment, the zone map classification of real property generally located at five seventy-seven east, four hundred south, from the one family residential zone to the low density residential zone, this is the Mazer neighborhood, presented by Mary Barnes, a planner.
Thank you, Councilwoman McGee. All right. Like you said, this is a zoning amendment is for five seventy-seven east, four hundred south, in the Mazer neighborhood. This is from R one-six to L V R, that you can see the general future land use map there is residential. The Mazer neighborhood plan, future land use map, shows this area as single family residential. That's in the planning commission staff report. Anyone see that map? The reason behind this rezon request is the property owner wants a place to attach single family or townhomes in the backyard of an existing single family home, which is on that lot. Right now, the, and the planning commission did recommend accrual for this reason, November thirteenth. All right, just a quick context of the area. There are some similar residential uses. Those two blue parcels that I have, it has existing single family homes in the front with additional residential units in the back.
How many additional on each of them?
So the one down here is three. That's a triplex in the backyard, and then the one up on three hundred south has two additional detached single family homes in the backyard. And then there's multifamily down south more around the cul-de-sac, there are all four places. And then just across five hundred east is smaller apartment buildings. And then it's also fairly close to three hundred south, which is a pretty busy, crowded, open city. And I, I included quite a lot of information on the concept plan, just in case you guys had questions. But I'm just going to skip through that right now. If you have questions, you can definitely go back to those slides. But essentially, we do recommend approval on this item. It will help to meet some of the goals of the general plan that I highlighted here and that are in the planning commission staff report. It will help increase housing diversity and supply in the area, and we do believe that the density matches some of the It will help increase housing diversity and supply in the area. We do believe that the density matches some of the surrounding neighborhood um and uses in the neighborhood. Um again, any questions? Hello? And anything you want to know, just let me know.
Counselor Whipple.
All right. So this is my neighborhood.
This is your place.
This is my place. Um I really love the, the. The density infill project that we had with the Habitat for Humanity one. It's just to the north of this. It's been. Really great. Like we have families who are able to buy those homes and live there.
So where do you choose them?
The blue one at the top on third south. Yeah, so they restored a super old house and then built the new two houses in the back. And it's. Completely well maintained, great, secure ho- housing for families that couldn't have otherwise afforded it. Um and even though this area is a. You know, a lot of it's a single family residential zone, that residential zoning was overlaid after most of these houses existed. So there are a lot of duplexes and triplexes in this area that aren't really reflected when you look at the zoning map. Like it's, it's much more diverse than what the map would just show. My concern that I have with this is that the main access is off of the alley. Which isn't really a publicly maintained street.
Yes.
I have an alley at the back of my house. That thing is in terrible shape. Like it's in worse shape than this one. But for the main access to a home to be off of a street that is not.
A street.
A real street. Yeah, it's not maintained at all. That's, that's my only real worry. But I mean, I would rather have that access than to. Have to pave the whole thing. I guess I have another concern as well. And that is that the. Whoever. Either the current owners or the previous one replaced all of the landscaping with gravel.
Hmm.
Um. I really don't like that. Yes. Um. Whatever happens, that has got to change. I don't know if there are any notices of violation out on that or if. When we see a property that is in clear violation of our current zoning and they're asking for. Special treatment or changes like. Uh they, they've gotta take accountability for the fact that they have a deficient and violating property. And fix that. Right?
Yes.
So what's the plan on that part? Cause that might be easier than the street thing.
Yeah, well, I'll just talk about the street thing really quickly. Sorry.
No, no.
Um I'll come to this picture. Um I went and took a picture of the alleyway and I also drove down it and it is, um I mean.
It's better than my alley.
I'm glad. See, I don't know if this can point, but um the further west you get, the worse it gets. Um but on the east side, it's actually fairly good. Um you're right, um we had a whole meeting with Public Works. They said that they do not maintain this. They never want to maintain us. This and we made that very clear to the applicant as well. The reason why, I mean, the applicant first came in with showing um. Parking in the front and no alley access at all. The reason why we. Asked them to look at an alley access was because we went to the neighborhood meeting and the main. Um the main concern was green space. Everyone wanted to make sure there was enough green space. Um they were really, like you said, the landscaping, the trees, they wanted to make sure that stayed if. If we had the access off of four hundred south, essentially this whole middle area in the, here, let me go to. This one. Essentially, all this middle area would be paved and.
Well, right now it's just gravel.
But if, when it become, when it, if, I should say, if this rezon gets passed and um. They come through with a project plan, they'll, they'll be required to provide a landscaping plan. That provides more turf. And I've already talked to him about that as well. Um so anyways.
On this project is the idea that the houses would still be facing four hundred south and that anybody going to visit it would come. From four hundred south and walk past the existing home to reach the front doors?
Yes, uh that's the, that's the idea.
Would the, sorry, um. Would the alley be used for the owners to park?
Yes.
So that, that's a pretty common feature in a lot of east, east coast towns. Uh it works really well, actually. I mean, they're.
Well, and it's already the use here too.
Super narrow and, and not super well maintained, but that's not their, their purpose is just. It's sort of a, a way of parking.
You see the, the eight cars at the one place on three hundred south there, so.
Yeah, so there, there are four homes technically. I said two in the planning commission meeting, but when I drove it, drove it, I realized. That these two homes on the end also um only access off of. Um this alleyway. So there is a precedent set on this particular alleyway. I haven't really looked at any other alleys or your alleyway.
So um. What's the plan with the gravel?
The plan for the gravel is that they have to landscape it. I already talked to him about that and he says that, oh yeah, I didn't realize it was that thing to pull it all out. Well, so he's gonna be um re-landscaping that with a landscaping plan. Um and if. If this for some reason doesn't go through, then we'll definitely. If the rezon doesn't happen and the project plan doesn't happen, either way, we'll make sure that the front yard gets properly paved.
Oh, good. Good. Yeah, I mean, this, this is the kind of. Infill project. That is great for this neighborhood and probably could be used throughout the city, you know? And the fact that there is an alley access. Um makes it even better, so.
Is the alley maintained by the city?
No.
Is that H O A?
No.
Oh, no.
So no one maintains it?
Nobody maintains it.
Someone, someone would throw in technically people should be maintaining their own alley.
Yeah. Um I talked with, I think it was, it was Chad Hill who was at the meeting. He said there's a prescriptive ease in of access that um. Anyone who is using the alleyway, those neighbors of the block, they kind of collectively. On that and it's their responsibility to take care of their own alleyway. Someone came through and paved the west side at some point because it has been paved. You can see that in the picture I have. But on the other side, it's, it's not, it's very much not as good. And the other alley just to the west. Um in the second block is walled over. No one has paved that in black. Sure.
Yeah, that's. I'm, I'm. Starting to talk to my neighbors and see if we can collect money to get asphalt in ours, cause it's bad. Um, yeah, I. I'm. You know, I have some little concerns about it, but I think this is the type of thing that we need. And I'm not concerned about the future land use map designation in the Mazer neighborhood plan on this. Because as I already said, you know, a lot of these aren't actually single family homes and that density. Makes it much more vibrant and walkable. It's good, but also our general plan that we just passed, which is more recent. Really supersedes those neighborhood plans. And it says we need to have this kind of infill and everything. So this keeps the character of the neighborhood while allowing for that gradual. Very gradual increase in density and potential future opportunities for, for homeownership. So, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Um I watched the planning commission on this and I read the letters from the citizens. Um. It's a rental right now. It didn't have an R D L. You're getting him to get an R D L for his rental. Um he's gonna take care of the yard. Um, I went and drove it. So I drove around it and that alley fits one vehicle.
Hmm.
So I was coming in at about three o'clock on a Monday, Tuesday, and. Like another car was coming in and had to fully back out and stay on the street on three hundred until I came all the way through. Like I think, I think the access is an issue.
Hmm.
Um the neighbors are concerned about it. Live there. I would be concerned about it. You're adding, you could be adding potentially six vehicles. To that back. And I think the back access is normal and great. Uh there's other ones that do it. But I think that's a narrow lot. And. I think it's a lot to ask of the alley and the neighbors. Um. There will be very little green space on that spot. I mean, even that, you know, the, that first house could have four cars. Um. I think it'd be, and we're not gonna get any homeownership with it. He's already said it's gonna be all rentals. So you're looking at three rentals. I think it'd be great to have that house, have an external A D U and have it be owner occupied. I think that'd be a great use of that land. It's much more narrow than the one for the Habitat and Humanity.
Hmm.
And look how little green space they have.
They should have a lot of green space.
It doesn't look like it. In the picture. I was in the picture. I didn't look at that when I was driving. But um, yeah, I'm really concerned about the neighbors' concerns that they had as well as the alley access. I think it's just too dense for that spot. I mean, it's just an investor trying to make a lot of money on there. At the expense of the neighborhood, they're not gonna be living. Counselor Handley.
Didn't the owner specify though that this is, this is family? This is um his children?
He mentioned that maybe someday it would be.
No, I thought it was immediately that was for his children.
Well, that's not what he was saying.
Did I get that wrong?
He's like. Yeah.
Children over that. He's a young man.
Oh, I see. Okay. I, the, the issue with the access road and alleys, I mean, that's the nature of alleys. You know, people just wait for. The person to come out. So I mean, it's not a, the, the issue in my mind is the alley's already there. We're not constructing it. Whether or not we're gonna use it. What's that?
But you're adding a lot more density to an alley that wasn't built for that, right?
Yeah, what I was gonna say is that I don't, I don't know. The issue isn't whether or not the alley is desirable. It's there unless you're. Unless we have plans to rip it up. I don't, I don't see that the. Narrowness of it, which of course means only one car goes at a time, is, is a reason to say. Uh that we can't have housing there. Um. You know, because like I say, that's, I mean, that, that seems far preferable than to require them to have all, all the cars parked. On four hundred south. Um. Anyway, I mean, I, you know, I'm a broken record, but I think infill projects like this are exactly what we need. I don't, that, that's, otherwise it's. Gonna be relatively unused space. It's not, it's not. You know, certainly could be more beautiful than it has been. Um and this is one way to do it, but. If we say no, I'm not sure if we're gonna get anything that looks. Any better than what's there right now, which isn't looking great.
Just wanted to, you can also quickly add, um. At the planning commission, there was some concern about the fire access and how that takes away green space, also backing space into the alleyway. So we worked with the applicants since then and moved the townhomes down enough so that there is enough backing space. Um for those four parking spots in the back. And I've, and this is an older client from last week, but I was able to talk to Lynn Schofield with the fire department. He said. If those townhomes are moved forward that much, then it's possible that fire access wouldn't be needed and there would just be a walkway. On the west side of, the west property line to um. Lead out to four hundred south. So there would be more. Ultimately more green space on the parcel by the, by the stage of the project plan.
Counselor Bogdan.
I also watched the planning commission meeting and I am a hundred percent with Catrice. I think that's just too dense for that. This parcel. That's, I, that's just too dense for that parcel. I did watch the planning commission meeting and. I did hear all those comments and it's just too dense. I agree with Catrice that the A D U and an owner occupied home, in my opinion, would be better.
Any other comments or questions for Mary? Okay, thanks so much, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have an ordinance amending publicity code regarding signs permitted in the freeway, commercial. And regional shopping center zones and associated application presented by Erin Argmore.
Okay, uh thank you. So this will be here tonight. Uh this is coming from. Uh a group that's working on uh the Walmart out there, that C three zone. Um but it makes sense. Uh I think it makes sense. Uh the C three zone was meant to be a regional draw. Um so along the signage to kind of represent that regional draw. Uh was, was maybe a miss when the C three was written. And I think this. Uh clarifies and cleans it up and, and gives those regional users. Uh the ability to advertise as appropriate. Uh so that's all I have for the study session. If, if you guys have questions, I can address now or later tonight.
Counselor Becky Bogdan.
How far away is this sign gonna be from my house?
Yes, it's gonna be pulled up.
That was, that was a question in planning commission, but I needed to make sure that that is not gonna be anywhere near my house. Otherwise, you're gonna see a mad council member every council meeting.
That's the, that's the thing we grabbed today. Uh so seven hundred and four feet.
My state question.
Seven and four feet.
Where does the sign go?
So the sign is.
Oh, perfect. I want it as far away from the residential as possible.
So do I.
Is the seven oh four from the back of those lots closest to it or is that from?
Yeah, it's seven oh four today.
From the dyke?
Here.
Ooh, Erin, you're one of the first to like. Use that property.
Don't ever say that.
Yeah, sure.
All right, please.
Is there any, any chance that if someone else comes into the property to the west? That the sign's gonna be any closer to my house or is all the signage gonna be there?
So all the signs would be there. Uh you can see back on the other page that they had um some additional box.
Oh, it'll be one of those good signs with multiple.
For additional use on the sign.
And so it's not gonna have me bug down at night. I'm gonna be fine.
Yeah, and they, they don't imagine being electronic display either, so that can give you additional comfort.
And um this is in the code that it's gonna be at that location and that. That after we approve.
The distance, the distance they're proposing there isn't in the code.
Can we add that?
Cause this is actual, this is code just for, like this could be permanent. Has nothing to do with landmark. This is code.
But there's only this location and the other location from what I read, the one up to the south.
Well, there could be more in the city though.
No, those are the only.
This is the only spot in the city with that zoning and that adjacency to the I fifteen that allow such a large sign. Um in the future, there's potential for additional properties along I fifteen to be zoned to the F C three zone, but currently this is the only parcel. That would allow this thing.
Could we say like five hundred feet from the residential? Neighborhood or something like that? That. The signs have to be placed so far away from a residential neighborhood?
I think while we're admitting it, uh if you wanna ask that question tonight, if they'd be comfortable with that additional. Um subsection of distance from residential zone?
That would make me happy.
If they're okay with that, I think.
It's worth asking. That would make me happy. Anything else than that, I might have to have a no vote for. Just because I want that. I don't want that changed.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see if he's okay with that.
Okay, thanks. Hey, anything else for Erin? Okay, thank you, Erin.
Yeah, we do not have a closed meeting, right? Oh, we do. All right. We also, council will consider a motion to close the meeting. Utah section code fifty two four two five allows them to be closed for certain. Specific reasons and we will turn this over to Brian Jones.
In this particular case, the uh reason for the meeting was uh discussion of the character and confidence of individuals is one of the permitted reasons.
I move that we close the meeting.
Certainly.
All right, then we will move to closing meeting. Oh, we do both, sorry. Let's forget. Counselor Holden.
Yes.
Counselor Christiansen.
Yeah.
Counselor Whitwell.
Yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
And Counselor Handley is excused.
You need to stick to follow in.
Uh we're doing that.
The problem?
Yes, no.
Um.